This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order this Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022, meeting of the Monterey Select Board at 12:00 PM. And Justin Maycock, President, Town Hall. And Susan.
Susan Cooper, President, Town Hall.
Okay, so our two members are here. The first item on our agenda is continued discussion regarding funding for tree work at the Community Center and in Bidwell Park. So we left off last week talking about potentially calling a special town meeting, or maybe if it was more manageable, directing or asking, requesting a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee. It's a lot. If all of the proposed work is to be done, it's a lot more money than the Finance Committee even has in the reserve fund.
Um, it's my understanding that we also could use a stabilization fund, since that can be used for any legal purpose, and I think tree work due to a storm would count as a legal purpose.
That requires a special town meeting.
To, to transfer the money.
Yeah, if we were to use, if we were to call a special in the next couple of months, we would be using stabilization, probably, I believe.
Right, because free cash would likely not be certified by them.
Um, and what is the amount that they're certifying?
We don't have that information yet.
Okay.
They have to finish on the end of year recording and all that. So I probably won't have a number for you until late September or early October.
Okay.
And that's relatively early, too.
Right. Does it make sense to, I mean, all right, I have several thought process. First of all, there is what we need to do about this, and then there is what we need to do in the future.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the future, I, I think clearly we need to have a larger reserve fund, which is exactly what it's meant for, and to have it so low, I think was, um, I understand why the choice was made, but I don't think it was a good choice.
I, I would disagree somewhat, to the extent that usually, I think the reserve fund's been more for, you know, this account went up a couple hundred dollars over, a couple thousand dollars over. Typically, a lot. Last year it was fuel even, and now we upped the fuel budget, because that was, at some point, it's not really unforeseen.
Right.
If there's an emergency like this, I mean, we're never going to keep enough money, you know, if there's a tornado and it, and it does a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage. At some point, we are gonna have to call a special town meeting. I don't know how much of the reserve fund was left over last year.
Not much.
Not much.
Um, the other option, when I was talking with Justin about it, was is um, other towns, each property has their own storm and maintenance cleanup, and we're gonna add that to the budget for next year. And/or we could have it all in Jim's, and you increase his storm damage. Um, the reserve fund is really only unforeseen emergency, which I know this qualifies, but we wouldn't need the extra step of having the Finance Committee approve it if it was already in a department's budget.
It, it's from, like, this is something I guess we should talk about at
Joint Budget Project.
Joint, at the joint meeting. Um, I, I would argue it's better to, I'd rather see it in one place to apply to all properties than in a bunch of different places, which seems extremely awkward, and, you know, so you spend the money in one place and you end up with a problem at the other. It doesn't make sense.
And Jim's fine with that. He's fine with whatever you guys decide. You wanna just make his budget bigger and...
But...
It's a little, it's more, you know.
More complicated.
It's more.
Police protective.
It's more complicated yet, because, and Melissa and I were talking about this yesterday. We should have a very clear understanding of who's responsible for, for what properties and what part. So for instance, the Park Commission has a budget that is there, that is under their jurisdiction for the mowing of Green Park. But the Community Center has a separate budget for the mowing at the Community Center, which is separate from the mowing at the library.
And the cemeteries.
And the cemeteries, and the guardrails, and the intersections. And, and then what does happen, though, is even if we say the library, the Board, Library Board of Trustees or the Library Director is responsible for the maintenance of the library, and the Park Commission is responsible for Green Park, when it comes to plowing and sanding and sulting, of course, it makes sense, and it's been our practice that the Highway Department is taking care of the plowing and sanding and sulting. And then, depending on what property you're talking about, the tree warden might have jurisdiction over the trees. Unless it's on a Parks property, and they could still ask for assistance from the tree ward. So if we are to call a special town meeting, we don't even necessarily know what account it would, the money would go into. Other than that, we could put it into the Highway Operations Storm Damage, which is a sub-line in, in Highway Operations. But, I guess, yeah, so there's the question of what do we do right now with their current situation, and then moving forward, how do we account for trees that fall down on town property? Who's responsible?
I mean, so ultimately, it seems like when we're talking about, what, 50K worth of work?
So it depends.
For the two, for Bidwell and Monterey, depending on what we, uh, the Community Center, depending on what we choose to do, right? I, I think that the, the choices are do the work or don't do the work.
Well, I think, for instance, you know, it may be possible, some of that work is really more proactive.
The Community Center's...
Yeah, and I don't disagree, from what I understand, it's smart to take down that whole stand, more or less. But, could it wait?
I thought the 25 for the Community Center was not the whole stand, but the 11 broken trees. That is my understanding of what that was.
No. I don't know, but I can tell you, like, when we met with Jim, right, he said, every immediate threat to safety has been taken care of. Right? So we're not talking about, like, I guess some of the stems that are still up. I don't know, there's so much a threat to sa- safety, they just look horrible, because you have that.
I think they were gonna mark what need, what should come down.
I had the impression when I asked Miles this last week, that he sort of hemmed a little, and my impression was that he was concerned that lower limbs could continue to fall. Because once the top of the tree snaps off, the whole tree is kind of in jeopardy and weakened. So I had the sense that he was concerned that another storm event could, uh, would be harder on them, but I agree with you. I think it's not as emergent as the actual downed trees in Bidwell Park.
Well, I don't know. I mean, who's to say? And, uh, I guess.
And that's not an emergency either, because we've got a close to public.
What's the scoop with, but we all know that people can just go around barricading. I, I've seen several people walk down there. Of course, they could be people that live there, I don't know, but what is our liability if people cross the barrier, even though it's March?
I assume we probably have to have a proper closing, but I will follow up on that.
So, right, I mean, but it just started the new fiscal year, right? Pretty much, a month ago. So either we're, we wait a whole year, or if we're gonna deal with any part of it before that, we may well need more monies that we, than we have, unless we wanna drain the reserve fund, in which case we're talking about a special town meeting. Would that pretty much sum it up?
Yeah, if we wanna do the work or any significant portion of it, we will have to call a special town meeting and likely transfer funds into Highway Operations first, for the sub-line of storm damage. Uh, unless we were more creative and, uh, transferred from stabilization into parks for what's at Bidwell Park and into another account for what's up at the Community Center. But we also need to continue to work with the tree warden and figure out what he may or may not do.
I think Jim, Jim was planning on us to just pull it in.
I'll probably...
And your, your other option, I'll say again, is art, I know him.
Yeah.
Um.
But I guess the point being, if we're hoping to clean up all the trees that have been suggested, then a special town meeting is, is gonna be required.
And I sort of feel like if we're gonna need a special town meeting, it might make sense to do the monies for both sides, but do you wanna, do you wanna meet with the Finance Committee first, before we decide that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, if we're gonna call a special town meeting, we should meet with the Finance Committee about, about, you know, what, where the funds probably come out of the stabilization fund.
And, and maybe also make a plan for, like, it would be good to have a little more from Jim and a little more from Miles about what is the most pressing. Can, you know, can any of the ways be cut off for the next fiscal year, so we plan for it?
Yeah.
Um, and if we're going to do the work, what makes the most sense for where to put the money?
Yeah.
Um, so, all right, well, I, that should then go on the agenda for the next joint meeting.
Yes.
Do we have a date for that meeting?
I think we're looking at the 16th, I'm wondering. That's what your note said, Melissa?
The 16th.
I can't do the night.
The 16th, yeah, that was what I suggested.
True, to the 16th.
I just didn't set a time, whatever you guys want.
Uh, Michelle and I were talking about having a Finance Meeting 4:00 to 4:30, or something like that, half hour.
Yeah, I could, I could do the 16th. Hi, Jim.
Hi, I'm good for the 16th, too, and I'm flexible on time, so whatever. So if you guys are gonna do 4:00 to 4:30?
4:30, that's what Michelle and I talked about.
We could do 4:30 on the 16th. Will that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Jim, we were just talking about the tree work.
All right, sorry I'm late.
No, that's, okay, so, um, essentially, you, do you wanna sum it up, or you want me to?
So we're trying to figure out what work really needs to get done.
Okay.
So that we can come up with an amount to call a special town meeting, more or less. That, I mean, that's, seems somewhat inevitable. And I guess we need to get a sense of what is the amount of money that is needed to clean up the trees that are, you know, half broken over already? And then what would the amount of money be to proactively take down the rest of the stand that is a probable threat in the future storm because of the weakening?
Right, right.
Yeah. Um, and what are those amounts? Like, if we wanted to do everything proactively, clean up the half-broken-off trees, and proactively take out everything that is now more likely to fall, what is that amount? And I know it's probably an estimate, but I don't know.
That, that we sort of already have.
Yeah.
So that, my question was, the estimate you gave for the Community Center was to take down the 11 broken trees, or the whole?
That's 27 vines.
Okay.
And that was about 26,000?
Yeah.
Right.
And was that, did John Field give you that estimate?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And that was, that's similar for Bidwell, and again, they're estimates.
Right.
You know, it was a similar estimate for Wellman Road and, you know, not similarly as high, but there was an estimate for that, and, and it was way under.
The work was under.
Yeah, but it went very smoothly. You know, we just went in there and cleaned it up, and we closed the road off for him, and he was able to get in there and work without interruption and...
Um, and this is a strange thing to ask, but if we, if we staged the work at the Community Center, in other words, did the 11 broken ones, and then went back a second time to do the rest?
Right.
Sometimes when you do it in two groups, it's good, because you break down the cost. Sometimes it ends up costing you more, because there's the whole bring out the equipment aspect, et cetera.
The mobilization's of costs are...
Exactly, so we...
Pretty high today.
Yeah, so, um, it would be great if we could have a little bit of a breakdown on that, so when we meet with the Finance Committee, we can make a fully informed decision about whether it's better to do all at one if we're having a special town meeting, or to break it, in cases.
Sure, we can split it up.
That'd be great.
And then, once we know how much money we need, we are talking about transferring it right in, you know, if we have a special town meeting, into Highway Operations.
Right.
Um, and then having all the money go into Highway Operations, and then to pay John Field, come out of Highway Operations, rather than into Park Commission account, Community Center account.
Right.
Um, and then going forward, we're trying to come up with a plan, so that there's no, there's no guessing game of who's responsible for this or that.
Right.
Um, it's very clear, if trees come down in Bidwell Park, you know, it's a Park Commission. And if they don't have the money, they need to make a reserve fund request or whatever, but just so that way it's not, we don't have a, a lot of different people to ask who has money.
Right.
But for right now, maybe we're talking about just putting it all in Highway Operations.
And that's fine, and, and, you know, moving forward as well, a, a plan for, you know, how do we fund this, should it happen again, after Bid, and then, you know, there's that, if we don't meet a threshold for meaningful money or fee loyalty?
Yeah.
You know, there's, I'm sure there's a gap there of some sort. It's a relatively small amount of money comparatively, when, when you talk about, you know, say a tornado or, you know, real catastrophic event.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, we kind of fell into that little pocket there, but, and how do we do that, if we meet that again? I, I would think that, the likelihood of running across that again is probably much higher than...
Then we'd like it to be.
Yeah, and I mean, at, at some point, we can always plan, but that's what we have a special town meeting for, and
Right, right.
It's not the end of the world to call a special, and we have money in stabilization, thankfully, and, um...
We just have to make sure that money gets replaced.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, we don't wanna, like, I, I'm concerned that we not run those things down, so that we keep our options open, because that's sort of what the purpose of them is partially for that, it's partially also to offset the tax assessment, but, you know, I...
Well, I think, yeah, if we had free cash available, it would make a lot of sense, but...
So if we know we're gonna have a special town meeting, I can definitely put it in the comments here that, you know, the sooner the better, I'm certifying free cash.
I don't, I mean, I think, uh, it's not necessarily reasonable to wait, you know?
I know.
Not till October anyway, and
And if we can't use...
the state has to be part of that process, too, so...
The what?
The state, right?
The state has to approve, yeah, but she has to start all the, the recording.
Uh, paperwork, gotcha, okay.
Um, and, and if it's not approved, you just use stabilization, and then we have the annual town meeting, you transfer some free cash back into stabilization to replace it.
Gotcha.
Um, is this the good time to bring up the other reason why we might need a special town meeting?
Sure, I mean...
It's not on the agenda, but I did notify you both separately that, um, Rick Milkie has informed me that the cemetery did not submit his fiscal year 22 bill. It was also not encumbered, I did confirm that with the accountant, and it's past the deadlines, so he's got the...
Wait, 2022 fiscal year?
Yes, June 30th would have been, you know, the work was done before June 30th. August 1st was the last day to encumber money from fiscal year 22 accounts. He submitted the bill on June 25th, he said. He's been unable to reach Linda Thorpe. He did ask if maybe one of the Select Board could reach out as well, she hasn't answered him.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it's a $5700 bill, so you either have the option to do a special town meeting and pay it freezing. I think you can raise an appropriate still. Or make him wait until May annual town meeting.
Okay.
Um, who, Linda Thorpe is the Chair of the Cemetery Committee?
And the other people are Dave Brown and...
Michael Banner, I think.
Thank you, Michael, yeah.
Um, so, we will work on figuring out, I guess we really know the amount of money to do everything. We'll decide if we want to do everything.
Right.
Um, or whether we want to, for, for example, keep Bidwell Park closed until annual town meeting. Just a, just a example. And then we'll probably call a special, and, and we'll see where, where we go from there. Thank you for, for joining us. Anything else on your end?
No, I'll tell my head, no. The transportation tomorrow, so we'll catch up on those.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry to take you away from other duties. But you'll break those out for us, so that we can talk about it on the 16th with the F A.
Yeah, I'm here.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you.
So the town charter committees, um, I went over with Melissa, the, the parties from before. We, we did not receive any new interest from our last posting, so what I'm going to do is, before our next meeting, I'm going to reach out to everyone who's already on the committee, and everyone who previously showed interest, and see who's interested in being on now. And I intended to do that, and I didn't get to it, and I passed, and I didn't know if we had received new interest or not. But I will work on that.
Okay.
Um, the next item is new business, um, but appoint Kate Reynolds to Office Assistant Position.
Yes, I contribute someone for the Office Assistant Position. I think she'll work out great. Um, I did hear back from one of her references, but not the other yet, but I basically what the one said, I don't think the other one's gonna say anything, or, um, so I'd like you to appoint her, so that I can make her an offer and see if she'll take the position.
Can we table this until the next meeting, because I have a reference
What?
Uh, to check, and I think that, um, yeah, I got, I I have a refer, I'm still in the middle of checking references. Mill Foil did...
I'm just giving you a cheap review. The Lake Arkville Working Group is going to meet on the 8th, um, and review it and make their formal recommendation for you to accept it. I'll add the full contract for you then.
Okay.
That's just...
And, and this is the only company that ever submits a bid?
Yeah.
I did raise the issue earlier, but apparently it has been in the previous contracts, that there needs to be a very clear statement of the actual cap on what we, what there is, that can be spent.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna run into that problem ever again, because this one doesn't, it has estimates for two things, but then it just gives an hourly rate for
Yeah.
mechanical harvesting, but apparently that will be in the contract, so that will be funded.
And our cap, I believe, is $50,000, right? Assuming that, well, I guess, unless any of the money for the...
I think there may be like 2,000 that we carry over.
Okay, and, but I'm also wondering, the lake scientist, I believe, is from a different firm. So if her work, Hillary Kenney? Right, if, I don't know if the 50,000 is supposed to pay her as well, but maybe Michael knows.
I believe it is, I want to just double check on that.
So whatever amount we decide, how to split that out. All right, so we'll come back to that, actually, Lake Arkville, let's read books on it, um, the Votes Act, so I looked at Mass General Law on this, and I'm a little confused.
Um, yeah, so I could not, I located Chapter 54, Section 72, which is the original M D L, but I could not locate anything regarding Chapter 92, Section 13 of the Votes Act of 2022. It's not on the Mass site. Um, the only thing I could find said it was revoked. Um, so I think that's the old version, and she's referring to something that happened in this session, but it's not up on the website. I did reach out to the clerk
Yeah.
on Monday, um, and asked for her to, um, send me something that, that, in writing, about that, a, a link, something. Um, I did not hear back from her. I sent her a reminder email on Tuesday, saying that I was not willing to, I wasn't comfortable signing this unless I could verify it, and reminding her that we had a policy of 24-hour response, and I still not heard anything as of 11:40 today.
So, a couple things. One is, I did, in Section 72 refers to 25B, right? This section may apply to, Section 25B at the discretion of the election officers and registrars for a city or town. And 25B says, it's about early elections, and that is city or town, so in this case, the Select Board on behalf of the town may opt to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each early voting site at the expense of the city or town, preserve order, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So it appears to me that maybe what's going on is, the police chief is in charge of detailing officers for polling places during an election.
The original one did, yeah.
But 25B is actually kind of clear and goes along somewhat with the spirit of this, which is that this, the town may opt to detail a number of police officers. So that's not the clerk or the police chief that is up to the town, according to 25B.
So police aren't required then, because Gareth and I were just talking about it, and we thought maybe to clarify everything, you should ask council whether an officer is required, because we do have a constable that's paid to be at the elections. And if you look up the duties of a constable, I believe it's, you know, keeping order, et cetera.
So 72, I believe, Section 72, it seems that Gareth is in charge, because it says, "The board or officer in charge of the police force," which would be Gareth, "of each city and town shall detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling place for one or more precincts at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing laws related to elections. Provided, however, that this section may apply to Section 25B at the discretion of the election officers and registrars for a city or town." So, it seems like it's up to Gareth that, how, or, or the, and the police chief, how many officers or constables he wants to detail.
And 20, 25B is specifically just early voting, so I don't think that applies here.
Except that there is early voting, I believe, for some of these elections.
There is, but I think the early voting is just them handing things in, that you, you couldn't really have an officer present there, so you don't think it's relevant to the discussion of an officer presence? Right, you don't have a voting area set up, they're just handing in their ballots, I believe.
I mean, I, but 25B says that the city or town may opt to detail for each early voting site, so that is an option.
So then we'd have to have a detailed officer for 11 days?
I'm just saying it's an option, according to the law, right?
Um, nevertheless, what she seemed to be asking us to act on was not 54, Section 12, 25B, but Chapter 92, Section 13 of the Acts of 2022, which I could not find.
Well, the point being, my understanding would be that the, the Act sometimes changes the law, changes, you know, section.
The, the, which Act? The Vote, well, I think that's the point. The Votes Act of, she's saying, as I understood her email, that the Votes Act of 2022, Chapter 92, Section 13, changed what Chapter 54, Section 72 said. However, I cannot find that Votes Act of 2022, Chapter 92, Section 13.
Well, can you find the Votes Act?
No, it's not posted to the best of my ability to find it, and I did spend like an hour trying to find it. Um, seeing as it was passed in this, you know, quite recently, um, this still being 2022, it is possible that they just, that, you know, the Senator, the government has not yet posted it on the Mass App site. I could not find it. I don't know if we looked for it, but I was not able to find it. Um, which is why I asked her if she had a written document, because it's very possible,
Yeah.
right, that clerks were sent something, even if it wasn't posted. Like, that would seem like a reasonable thing for them to do, because it probably takes a while for them to get the official thing up there. So it's very possible the clerk has a document, but that doesn't mean I've seen the document, and before I sign something, I would like to see the thing which I'm referring to. Um, so I'm not comfortable signing that until I've seen the Votes Act of 2022, Chapter 92, Section 13, because the only one I could find was about things being revoked, not things being altered.
So, I guess what we'll do is, we have to research more about this and learn more. As to right now, because if the special election is on the 23rd, we'll have likely one meeting before then.
Mm-hmm.
Um...
And if we, you know, if it becomes clarified, and we just have to come in and sign the document, I, I'm not unwilling to, um, ask the police chief to set a detail. I just, if I'm being asked to do it according to law, I wanna know what the law is before I sign it. That's all. Right, like, I think we probably should have, but your point about the constable is well taken. Is that something we need to...
Well, in the paragraph before, it says, "With detailing a sufficient number..." Well, in the paragraph before, it says, with detailing a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each polling location.
Wait, where?
Wait, sorry, the question here.
Paragraph right under, right under her signature where she says, action is requested in response. The third sentence. Ah, for each polling.
Okay, this, this is not a question about how many police, I mean, it's a question about that eventually, but. Right now, it's a question about who is in charge of the police detail. Is it the police chief, the clerk, or the select board, or someone else? And then at that point, they, that person who has authority can decide whether we need police or constable or both. At present at a polling site.
But given that we're talking about election on the twenty-third, you might need to inquire as to whether, in fact, um. The constable would be sufficient or not.
Well, if it's not up to us, if it's up to the police chief or the clerk.
Right.
Then they can make that decision, if it's up to us, then we need to think about. Whether it should be police officer or constable.
Right, but if it takes us a week to find out if it's up to us, and then the election is like the following week, and we might need to get the person. That seems like, do you see what I'm worried about? Especially we talked about not meeting next week.
Yeah.
Which means that our next meeting would be only a week before the elec, than a week before the election?
I'll reach out to another town clerk in another town that's full time and see if they got anything and can clarify it a little bit. And I know it still takes a week, but maybe the answer will be that it's the chief or the clerk.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I don't think it's.
I just wanna make sure we have correct coverage on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Um, and so. It would be good to both know who's responsible and whether the constable is adequate coverage or not. Because we can't proceed from. Like, if we do it sequentially, it might be after the twenty-third.
Yeah, I mean, it's just nine, uh-huh, alright, moving on, we'll figure that out, we'll do more research. Prepare agenda for second homeowners meeting. So. I don't know if we wanna have specific agenda items like we've had before, or if we just wanna invite. People in for public comment.
Okay, okay, I, I have to get this off my chest, I, I am. Concerned that something is like this, is coming up this close to the election, and that I could not get a timely response from the clerk. I don't think that's okay. Right, um, I, I realize that she doesn't have office hours on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday morning. But that doesn't mean she can't check her email, particularly when she sent us a series of emails upon which I had multiple questions. And we're being asked to deal with those things today. She could have at least checked to see if we had questions, I, I, it's a problem for me. Um, and I think it's logistically a difficult situation, especially if we're not meeting next week. Because that would mean none of those things could be dealt with properly until. Two weeks from now, which is less than a week before the election. Um, and we did set a policy asking that employees respond to us, and she did not respond.
So I believe the policy. I can pull it up right now, but.
She also has discretionary hours that she's. Could be used during this time to answer your questions.
Well, theoretically, she used more than her discretionary hours on Sundays setting up for the elections, but that's neither here nor there. Like, checking your email when you ask people to do a bunch of things that are time critical would be reasonable.
No, but I mean, she has discretionary hours each week. She has like nine hours of discretionary hours.
So the, the time limit on the policy was that. It is a reasonable expectation that substantive communication should be answered promptly within three business days or the next day that an employee is regularly scheduled to work, whichever comes later.
Um, right, that, that might be a problem in places like this.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we're, we are working on obviously the, the clerk showers and that's later on in the agenda, but as far as. The, this policy as it's written up and adopted. This is not a violation of that policy at the moment.
Okay, I, I, I stand wrong on that, I, it, it is a problem now, because I'm, yeah, it is coming up, but there's. Like, there were several things she asked us to do. That are problematic without more information than we were provided, and. She's not here, and you don't have answers to those questions, which means we can't act, which puts off some critical things. I mean, maybe we have to meet next week after all, just to deal with that, I don't know.
Well, I, it's really, you know, regardless of who it is. Who is to set the police officer details, I mean, if it changed with the law. They might have done that, I mean, that may have happened recently, right, on June twenty-second, there was an election reform law. So that's, I guess it's July. So, but part of what may be happening is regular towns are preparing for state primary and, and state elections.
Yep.
In September and October, or September and November, whatever, and we are having an earlier election. Which is kind of off schedule. Um, I, I don't know the full story, I'm not that worried, because I think regardless of whether it's the police chief or the clerk or the select board that sets. Officer details will. Will set appropriate. Details, and, and it's usually been pretty straightforward, I think, with one police officer on detail during polling hours. Um.
For the, I'm not worried about for the primary, I think we have plenty of time to work that out, I'm only concerned about the twenty-third. Which is only three weeks away.
Yeah, I just mean, it, but you look at Mass General Law, and it's not immediately. Clear, it does seem like kind of a convoluted. Issue and.
Oh, it's not clear at all, and, but importantly, the thing that she's asking us to act on is the thing that just changed, which. She's a citation for, but no actual information about. Right? Because you're, you were focused on chapter fifty-four, section seventy-two, which was the already existing thing. But the reason she's writing to us was because if you look at the, her, the text of her note, the Votes Act, which just happened. Right, on June twenty-second.
But the Votes Act changes the section, right?
Exactly, but we can't, I, I cannot get access to the Votes Act. So while she's telling me it changes it in this particular way, I cannot verify that, because I cannot get to. The written text of the Votes Act, chapter ninety-two, section thirteen.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, sometimes the law changes and it, and it's confusing, I don't know what, what Terry knows or doesn't know.
And like I said. But I'm just pointing out that it's very awkward to be asked to do stuff without backup and without her answering. It, it's problematic, she's asking us to do something. Maybe we should ask if there's something substantive like this, that she be present at our. Meeting, where we're, so that if we have those questions, we could ask her. Um, I, I just, we need a better system, because it's not the first time this has happened.
Well, another thing we could do is we could act. We don't. Need to put everything on every, on the first available agenda, right, like town charter committee, I could have done the, reached out to everyone. And then come back, okay, these are the appointments, right?
Absolutely.
Or the discussion of tree work or, or this, like, we could really figure it out, one person would figure it out, and then bring it to the board for approval. And that's not really the way that we've been doing it, we've been kind of working through.
As things came up.
Things as they come up and working through them. And I think we'll do the same. Here, and hopefully in the coming days, we can get more clarity on exactly what it is, I know it, that would have been appreciated before the meeting. Um, and maybe it was a mistake to even put it on the agenda for this meeting. Um, given the lack of clarity.
Um, cause, and actually, that, we also on this list was police officer detail at elections. Um, I believe we also had an email from her asking us to set the detail rate for twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Which is less than the hourly rate we pay than per time police officers. Um, and hasn't been the detail rate according to the chief in white sometime.
Yeah.
Um, you know, our. The chief sent me a long list of detail rates, we're sort of, we're neither at the top nor the bottom. Um, detail rates are competitive, because we're asking. A policeman from somewhere to work outside their normal work hours. Um. I, I don't, I mean, we can set it for twenty, but we're not gonna get anyone.
Well, again, I guess the question of, i- the select board has. It, does the select board have the, the authority over the detail rates, maybe ultimately?
You, you do, but the chief said you can't have different rates, it's forty-five or that's it.
Okay.
Um, apparently, he told me he checked with Barrington, there was an issue some time ago where they had had set different rates for different things, and the state had an issue with it.
Okay. So it is forty-five for detail?
Yeah.
So, so we, and we won't. We're not gonna change that, I don't think.
No.
Unless we review it at some point, but it would change detail period, not just for elections versus. Okay.
One, one detail rate, end of story.
So I think, how about this, we, we will come back to this at our next meeting. Um, it's, I believe that regardless of whose authority it is to, to, to assign detail, and we will. Figure that out, and it may take some research.
Okay.
Because maybe it was something and the law changed it, and.
I, I'm sure there is, I'm just don't know if it is, right, like.
Well, I don't, I don't know. And, and then.
Not that I disbelieve her, I'd just like to see it before I have to sign it.
Yeah, a- and, and so then at that point, if it is the select board. Uh, you know, setting the detail, we could, as this. Motion suggests just designate the police chief that authority which the select board has. And, and work with him, or he, and he can find someone to work that detail, we can. Stay in touch in advance of that meeting as we. Research it, I mean, I, I mean, I think even if, let's say, the select board has the authority. To, to assign details, it's really gonna be the police department that's taking care of who it is, so we would probably designate that authority. Uh, the Mass General Law, I mean, is a little confusing, so we will work. And as far as the hours and responses, we are, you know, obviously later on working on, on the scheduling and. And I think the other thing that we can do if we want to basically have all of our questions answered. Is not necessarily put items on the first available agenda. But I put this on just because I didn't want to miss it, but I, but I agree with you, I didn't.
I, I totally agree. It was also timely.
Yeah.
It was time sensitive if we're going to have someone for the twenty-third, which is three weeks away.
Yeah, and I think regardless of how, how, whose job it is, there probably is going to be a police officer. Unless whoever's job it is decides we don't need one, but. Um.
Right, I mean, I, I think there probably is gonna be, well, either an officer or, or the constable, and I mean, the, the question is, does the constable? I'm not really sure what exactly the duties of the constable are, or whether the current constable feels. Like they can deal with any difficulties that arise.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe we, you know, that might be, we need to have a constable that is willing to do that, if the constable can serve in that role, I don't know. And I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know who other than the council, because it does say constable in there.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it's supposed to be constable or a police officer, I believe.
So should there be questions in the meantime, does Gareth have permission to check with council to confirm some of these things, like what? Constable. Duties are, if they can replace him, a detail officer, since it sounds like you're probably going to make. Him responsible, can he just, because we weren't clear when him and I were just talking before the meeting. And him and I both thought it would be good to clarify some.
When there's a constable can serve, what is the standard practice then? For, uh, police officer detail at elections?
So I can't say that there's been a standard, it's been kind of. Off and on whether Terry has, has had someone there, the constable, when, when Ray was alive, Ray was always there. I don't think Julio stays for the whole time, but if he knows that that's part of his duties, then he would stay there, I mean, he's being paid the, the stipend, he's a constable. So I think it would just be clearer if we could know. Who is supposed to be there, who can be there. I mean, does it say an officer has to be there, or is it an officer or a constable?
You know, seventy-two is pretty clear, it's officer or a constable, the question is who's making that decision? Who's, is it Gareth, is it the select board saying? We think an officer is necessary, or we don't think an officer is necessary. Uh, or the constable's gonna be there or not, and the constable's elected, right?
Yes.
So that's tough, because we can't necessarily this year say you have to be there. Um.
But if it's defined as one of his duties to be at elections. I don't, I just think it would be clear if the council could quickly weigh in.
Well, and I've got a, uh. A draft amendment to the contacting council policy, I don't know that it's necessarily related to this case, but. Um. I mean, what's clear to me is this, which is that someone or somebody has the authority. To detail which officers and or constables are going to be at a polling place. Uh, we just don't know. Who that is at the moment, and if it's the select board. More likely than not, we would designate it as the, we would designate that authority to the police chief.
And if it's already the police chief.
And if it's already the police chief, it's already the police chief.
In which case, it makes sense, while we're waiting to find out. Which of those things is true.
Yeah.
For the police chief to ascertain whether in fact the constable alone is sufficient.
Well, here's, let me pull up seventy-two, so seventy-two is. Detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables. Right? So it's pretty clear to me that it could just be the constable, and it's a sufficient number, so if. You know, if, if the officer in charge of the police force determine that the sufficient number is zero, or one, and the one person is a constable.
Right. Right.
I mean, we could ask council. I don't think it's really necessary, the, the question for me is.
Necessary.
Um, whose responsibility is it?
Well, and ultimately, even if the constable is appropriate, I guess that either the con, and maybe the police. Chief and the constable will have to have a conversation about. What they think is the necessary staffing. Or adequate staffing for our, I, because I, I can honestly say, I have not stood in the polling place during the entire eight hours of an election. Um, ever, right, I come in and I go and I leave. While I've been physically present, there has never been an issue, but I have been told by a number of different people that over the years, there have been. Various issues that have come up. Um, I've never been present at one, so, right, I, I have to rely on. Um, when the chief tells me there have been issues, that there have been issues. So I'm not in a position to judge whether or not, um. Julio would, could cope with those issues, because I wasn't there, and I don't know how divisive or difficult they were, and whether he would have been able to. Ameliorate them or not, but I feel like Gareth and Julio could have a conversation to come to that conclusion, and that's going to be true whether. We empower Gareth or Gareth is already empowered.
Yeah.
So should we perhaps ask Gareth to have that conversation with Julio?
Yeah, I mean.
So that they can establish what correct coverage would be, so that when we act. That's already in place, to make sure we have something in place for the twenty-third?
How about this, I, I will reach out to Gareth. And. Tell him that we are still figuring out, because of the likely recent change in the law, exactly who is responsible for. Assigning police officers and constables to elections. But. If it's the select board, and I'll always do this with the permission, but if it is the select board, we will. Uh. Delegate that authority to the police chief, and if it is the police chief, he should start thinking about. What officers and, and or constables, and only one constable, will be at the polling place on the twenty-third. Um, and we will get back to him after our next meeting. Uh, with more information, but that he can start preparing with that information that we have.
I, I like this idea, I think it's excellent.
Okay, that's how we'll deal with that issue, and then we'll come back to it when we have more clarity.
Mm-hmm.
On exactly who's responsible. Um, so preparing the agenda for the second homeowners meeting. Um, I don't know if we want to have specific items, because I don't think we will really take action at this meeting, in the sense that. Um.
It's sort of a listening meeting.
It's a, yeah, it's a public comment meeting, but if we want to have items to. Draw people to the meeting and to kind of guide the discussion. That's fine too.
Have there, what sort of agendas have existed in previous homeowners meetings?
Usually cell service, internet service, the store, the lakes.
And I believe that means already, not the formal agenda, but it is on the town calendar, right, I think.
It is on the calendar, yeah, but I just don't have an agenda most of the time.
Next Saturday, the thirteenth, I believe.
At twelve, right?
At twelve noon, and that works for you with your, um, that works for you, right?
Yeah, I mean, it will either work or it will not work, like, I, I'm not gonna know till after the surgery on the eleventh, what, like.
Okay.
You know, he seemed to indicate that I'd be okay a couple days later, but.
Yeah, if we need to, if we need to.
Stay tuned on that one.
If we need to postpone, we can.
I, I mean, I'm literally not gonna know probably till Thursday night, right, like, this, I'm gonna have to recover from the surgery and see what condition I'm in.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not like I'm hunting, I just don't know.
Yeah. So. Do we want to have an agenda, I mean, it could be.
If it's hard.
Fiber connect.
Gets people to, to like engage without a focus.
Right? Yeah.
At the same time, I don't wanna like. Put up a punching bag, I can avoid it. Um, and I I mean, if they're coming with their own issues, I I wanna know where they are.
So what if we do Lake Garfield Beach? Uh, Lake Garfield Town Beach?
Do you wanna do the educational stuff? You know, the consolidation, the building of the school?
Probably not for second homeowners, since they don't have kids in the system.
Well, if the impacts then tax wise.
True.
It does, um.
But if you have.
You know, you and Justin might talk a little bit. People will need to start thinking about this.
Yeah.
Now, from my perspective, you know, we can talk about it next May, when we have, you know, the town meeting, but they need, they need to get on the website, they need to understand what just a real broad overview, we have no clue where it's gonna turn out, but.
They're they're also probably not voters, which, like, I'm I'm have no problem with telling them about it.
I think they should be told, I mean, they, you know, that
Yeah, sure.
Then they can make the, you know, they need to know it's coming.
Right.
So what if we, what if we start out with the um, fiber connect, Green Park, Ball Field, but Lake Garfield Town Beach, transfer station, the eight town uh, school regionalization.
What would we be saying about the transfer station?
Well, it's just one of the services that, um,
Right.
I was just trying to think of things that people.
Let them comment on this, you know, you put it out there and there may be no comment, the comment might be something.
Right. Right.
There's been a lot of change and help, so.
It might be good to mention that, um, people need to be careful both with bird feeders in the garbage.
Bears.
Yeah, bears.
Yeah, I can testify to that.
Per- yeah, well, and and they did remove the bear that was, um, they believe was guilty for those five freckles.
So they removed them?
Yeah. Um, but that doesn't mean there aren't other bears in the area, um, so it would be best not to train them to take trash if if we can avoid it.
I haven't caught any of them, can't every four, five, six weeks, seven weeks.
Cool.
But the one did walk down the, uh, metal bombs driveway, probably five weeks ago, in the morning, just slow down there at six o'clock in the morning.
I have one that travels right through my yard, across my driving, in my parking lot, turn around and and pauses there at my front door. Still like, oh, it was there yesterday, in fact, it's my events in the affairs.
Okay, so, for, that will be our tentative agenda for the second homeowners meeting, um, Melissa. And, should we post that? Now, I guess?
Probably, I mean, it's only a week and a half away.
Yeah, and we just had, um, public comment at the end.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, and we decide, we agreed on town, in town hall, right?
I don't know, did we, did we, yeah, we.
Yeah, why don't we do at town hall, why don't we do a go to meeting, like, I know it's a Saturday and and stuff, but, uh, I know last year someone was wanted to attend, but wasn't in town. So, we'll do it, we'll do the whole.
It also gives the advantage of, if I actually can't physically be here, I could.
Yeah.
Uh, because I, that I'm sure I can do, even if I'm like lying there with my foot on eighteen pillows and I spat, I can still promote him.
And if you can't, and we need to postpone it, we can do that.
Okay, so I I hate to do that last minute, you know?
If you need to, you need to.
Point.
So, okay, so we'll post that, thank you, Melissa.
Mm-hmm.
And cultural council, cultural council appointment, from Barbara Dolman. And this would be a three year appointment, so I've moved to appoint Barbara Dolman to the cultural council for a three year appointment to expire in August third, twenty twenty five. Is there any further?
Uh, I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion or comment? Okay, I'll call a vote. Justin votes yes.
Susan, yes.
And the motion carries, and Barbara Dolman is serving on the cultural council, thank you, Barbara.
On the topic of appointments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you did reach out and ask the court to give us an update on appointments.
Yes.
Um, I I had several questions for her about her response. Um, she said she reaches out to people in January, which makes a lot of sense if they were elected in November, but not a lot of sense if they were elected in May.
Yeah.
Um, because then they would have been in office for seven months without necessarily COI, O N L, or being sworn in, um, which seems a little awkward.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't heard yet back from her about that. Um, I also asked the question as to why it would take four to six weeks to just give us an update, if that's something that's being regularly kept up to date, and it's on the town computer, why can't you just print it out? Why will it take six weeks to give us that list?
Of council, uh, of conflict of interest, that's.
Just an update on, do you mean, like, what are the appointments up to date? Like, if if she's keeping track of that, as that information comes in, it should already be in that system, and I don't understand why it it should take six weeks to.
No, my my understanding was that there's a data entry backlog, that it hasn't been, that it is not.
Hasn't been kept up to date?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
That there's essentially a pile of, you know, when someone submits a conflict of interest, it goes in a folder, and then it gets entered into the computer.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's the election, the three upcoming elections uh, taking over the town, or what that is.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the July twenty eighth email from Sophia, uh, which is a draft email to the town clerk um, discussing in particular the town clerk's schedule and an alternative direct report. Um, so it's a pretty simple, short email, or letter. Um, asking for a s- uh, uh, a permanent schedule, it's not provisionary, and discussing an alternate direct report. Um, I did, and 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 Sophia in particular is looking for a few dates. I was, I am the the details are not entirely clear to me, like if I'm not given a revised schedule, your schedule return, will return to its pre-provisionary schedule, but I don't know what that would be, because since I've been on the board.
Right.
This schedule has changed.
I I actually.
Multiple.
Did not just to print this out, I probably should have, but I I made some revisions to it.
Yeah.
Um, and upon reflection, I, uh, I mean, I I feel like I would like to see the clerk hours
Mm-hmm.
be at least some in the beginning of the week and some towards the end. I'm okay with no more, I I'm okay with a max of three evening hours going no later than eight P M. one night. I'm okay with three hours on a Saturday, I didn't say that in there, I'm just telling you this. I would like to see no discretionary hours, and I would like to see all of the hours permanently posted and have her work during those hours. I think it's, you know, for all the reasons previously listed, I think it's really important that you have some hours at the beginning of the week, not just Thursday, Friday only, it's not working for a lot of reasons. Um, there have been other issues in town hall that resulted from that, that weren't resolved timely because of it. Um, and I think you're aware of them. Um, so, I I'm all, like, I'm okay with it, you go ahead and read what the what the working, you may have had edits too, I don't know.
So, I. Yeah, no, I didn't have edits written down, but, um,
And Sophia, yeah, yeah.
My my question is,
Go ahead.
So your email says your schedule will be set for you, and Sophia says your schedule returned to its pre-provisionary.
But I have the same issue with you.
Yeah.
Which is that, did, there wasn't really one. I mean, I don't know how far back we have to go to a time when those hours existed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that weren't a lot of discretionary hours. Um, so, since I don't think there is one, it needs to be one that we set.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there were schedules. I just don't know, know when, I don't know if Sophia was aware of that, um.
She she was aware that there was multiple, I I think your idea is good, Susan, because then if she can't come up with something, then
Then we'll do it.
It's the town, you know, like, and and if it's a worry about being in the building alone with me, I can actually make up a schedule for you when there are other people here, and that would not be an issue. I can tell you the hours and the days that the town hall is populated.
Right.
So I, I don't think all of the hours should be during, because it says already in here, we will need the schedule be during the working hours of the town, which is what, is that seven to four, Monday to Friday or something? I don't even know what the the necessarily the working hours of the town are.
Maybe it should just say normal business hours, so that would be more of a eight to five, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the point being, I appreciate that some hours are outside of normal business hours. Um, right now, I guess the only normal business hours are Friday afternoon, but I don't think that we should change the schedule to all normal business hours, or ask that that be the case, because there's plenty of working people
So, and that's why I I, right.
who need to do things with the clerk that the public needs to do with the clerk.
Which is why I was saying I didn't think that that was perfect, because I had subsequently, but, like, I'm okay with some Saturday hours, I'm okay with one
Yeah.
days, evening hours, those things aren't in there.
Yeah.
Um, that that was my point, sorry, I wasn't clear. Um, and I'm not, like, well, we'd have to tweak it to get those in there. Um, but, you know, we could say you you may work one afternoon and evening, you know, later than eight P M., you may work a maximum of three hours on Saturday. Um, all other hours must be during, uh, during the regularly scheduled Monday to Friday work day of, what, what is this building open, eight to four?
Eight thirty to four, it's a blank, yeah.
Eight thirty to four?
Yeah.
Um, uh, and there must be hours it both beginning and end of week, like, they can't all be on two days.
Yeah, so I think it, I think as long as they're separated, you know, two non-consecutive days, right? It's helpful, uh, if you need to re- reply to things or something like that. That's how I would word it personally.
At least two non-consecutive days.
Um.
That that's a good way to leave.
And I would remove Mondays if I were you, because the majority of holidays fall on Mondays, and then it takes out the whole, uh, making up hours and just a non-consecutive.
Just to avoid the making up hours?
And the only other question I have, just in in general, for a- and and I and I think that this is a good thing, and I think that we need to have a schedule that works for for everybody involved.
Including the public.
Yeah, including non-consecutive days. Um, and I think during, hours during non non-normal business hours are good, and I think it'd be good to have hours during normal business hours. Um, my question is, and maybe this is for Sophia, but um, are all employees being treated the same, in the sense that some employees, uh, not all of their hours are their schedule is all of their paid hours, and, do you know what I'm saying?
Um, sort of, I mean, the library has hours that aren't during the work week, but that's part of the library, and that.
No, I'm sorry, it's more about an employee's schedule encompassing all of their paid hours, like the schedule where they're available to the public.
Who who does it?
So Don, I mean, Don's job is different, but he, right, he has fourteen.
Torrico, not Flossin.
Yeah, Torrico, Don Torrico has fourteen hours, right?
Okay.
And a lot of that site visits and such, but how mu- how many are office hours, is it two on Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Two and a half on Tuesday.
But the the majority, and and, yeah, the great majority of his job is site visits.
So it's five. Yeah.
So that's a job specific thing, right? All of Terry's work, according to Terry.
I, well, each. Yeah.
We asked this question, right? According to Terry, all of her work takes place in her office here, all of it.
No, but the point being.
He said in a public meeting and in writing that none of the work she does is done outside this building. Right? She said that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not true for Don. So I I.
There are other employees, um, the assessors or the assessor himself, I mean, though, not directly under select board supervision, but there are other town employees whose hours, who work more hours than their scheduled office hours.
Right.
And I just wanna make sure that what we're doing is consistent, because we also have other employees where all of their scheduled office hours are all of the hours they work that week. Or if you're a transfer station employee, all of your hours are when the transfer station is open or act, but I just want that consistency.
I think that consistency has to be consistent within the job. Because they, right, like, the transfer station doesn't work when the transfer station isn't open, that makes sense for the transfer station. The library works when the library's open, that makes sense for the library. Right, like, some jobs, that makes sense, we know what the shifts for the police are. Um, elected positions are different, right, because we don't really have any control of the assessor, he's elected. Um, but I I agree with you, I'm not saying that we should be consistent, I'm saying that the reality of the different jobs we have is that what makes sense for one job doesn't necessarily work for another, right? If you have someone who mostly does site visits.
Right.
Our office hours are less relevant than someone who's always working in their office
Yeah.
and has a public facing job where they, that people need to be able to interact with them, to hand in forms, to get forms, to get guidance on filling out forms. Um, outside of the paperwork for elections, the great majority of her job is public facing. Um, so it makes sense to me that her hours should be hours where the public can make sure.
Yeah, and.
And since she has to be in this building anyway, I don't see why we shouldn't be making it easier on the public, rather than at the whim of the employee.
Yeah, so I just think, you're right, it's job by job.
Mm-hmm.
We, but I think going forward, we we should work with Sophia to specify in the job description maybe.
Yeah.
All of these hours are office hours, or half of these hours, or in Don's case, some of the hours are site visits and some, uh, and and be very clear with that.
Yeah, I I I'm all for that, I agree, and and if it has to be tailored by the job, so be it, that that's not an unusual thing, different jobs require different things.
You have that. Um, so as to edits to this.
Mm-hmm.
I would say instead of we will need this schedule to be during the working hour.
No, just going to cut change.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
That way I don't have to remember.
Yeah.
Are you keeping in the last paragraph?
Uh, yes, but it's changed somewhat because of the issue we raised where um, there wasn't necessarily a schedule, so it it, I rewrote it to say that if it, if she doesn't propose one, that we can approve, we'll send it.
I don't know, I mean, the one that starts with until the current situation is resolved.
Uh, yes.
You're you're keeping that in there?
Yeah.
I would take out until the current situation is resolved, and maybe Justin, you can fill her in on the conversation we had yesterday at mediation, because I I did draft a amendment, which I'll give to you guys today for your next meeting.
Okay.
To talk about clarifying who people report to and the procedures to try to get the select board out of human resources and obviously you guys have to go down there, but to actually let myself and Sophia do the jobs that are job.
Well, for some reason, Sophia thought, Sophia recommended this, right, so I don't know. Maybe we need to talk with Sophia, and I also don't know, Sophia's been talking to Donna.
Yeah, I I believe that, from what I understood in my conversation with Sophia, this was a suggestion Sophia had after the conversation with Donna.
Right, but I would take out until the current situation is resolved, because.
Just Justin will temporarily be.
That could be.
It's open to your interpretation, right?
Seven years, you know, I mean, like, um.
And maybe instead of temporarily filling in, say, acting as that's a little more
Right.
general. And by the way, the cats were just to make sure she knew that it was in addition, it wasn't meant to be cats in the hall.
So this is how. I didn't add two non-consecutive days, I don't know how that fits in.
Um, yeah, see, we need some hours, I, I'm, I'm not really comfortable with it, because she could say she doesn't have some hours.
I mean, but I don't know.
I, I think we have to be a little more.
What we want, I mean, I don't think, I didn't want to say all hours, because I frankly think that's a disservice to the public.
Why?
Tell all hours during normal business hours?
Oh, no, I mean, I said I was okay with one evening, um, no later than eight, and three hours on Saturday. Are you good with those two ideas?
I.
I was expecting that it would be a conversation, I wasn't expecting you just accept it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think that, uh, I don't think that two evenings is, i- is against, I mean, if you're talking about people who are filling out, eh, things to run, or they're going into open meeting lots, they work. They can't do that during the day. and retire.
Fair, although I will point out that everyone I have talked to, first of all, no other town that I'm aware of in, in the surrounding towns from Richmond South has clerk hours outside of normal business hours.
Not even on Saturdays?
Um, I believe there's one, I, I'd have to look on my thing, one that says by appointment on Saturday, one.
Mm-hmm.
Right? All of the people I've talked to that have lived elsewhere have had to manage their schedule even when they were working full time or are still working full time. Like, I dropped a Paula, maybe she and John Levin went and moved, she works full time. She has to find a way to get to the clerk's office if she wants something.
Well, and we don't want that, do we?
Fair, but I'm just saying to, if there's one, if there's one day a week where you can do that, and there's a Saturday, it's reasonable for you to get there, since almost no other town offers that at all. I don't think we need to offer two evenings and Saturday to accommodate those people.
I think if it works for the clerk though, it works well for, and we're talking about the public, I think it works well for the public. So I'm not opposed to more evening or weekend hours for that reason. Um, I think the biggest question, I think, is having, uh, some non-consecutive days. So that, you know, with email and, and stuff, work can be done, you know, sometimes you don't get to an email between Thursday and Friday and all of a sudden you miss the whole week.
But she's coming in and working a ton of hours on Sunday.
So.
Which means that all of those hours aren't available to the public.
Yeah, so I'm, I think the, the two main things are, are non-consecutive days and having the paid hours be available to the public. All of the paid hours be available to the public, I mean, all of the hours be available to the public, rather than ten or five.
As. Right.
So nineteen point seven five hours will be available.
Uh, no discretionary hours, is what you're saying, okay. Um, and you're okay with her working all day Saturday and all day Sunday?
Well, she's never had official office hours on Sunday.
That's true, which is, uh, I say so.
Yeah, so I, I mean, at some point, look, at some point, we need to ask for a schedule, and then if it doesn't work, then we can negotiate.
A change.
The schedule, but, you know, I guess we have to see what, what is proposed, but the mi- I think the most important things are having non-consecutive days.
Mm-hmm.
And having nineteen point seven five office hours, and beyond that, we can, we could work through, you know, what works for the town and what works for the clerk and, and find something that's mutually agreeable.
Um, do we need to reiterate that there aren't, that, um, w- we don't typically allow part-time employees to make up hours? Especially ones that have a, an assistant that could be working if they can't beat them?
I don't, I mean, I don't know, this, the letter that Sophia drafted was to deal with these two, two, two things, or any kind of way of.
Okay, that's fair. Well, I was just thinking of the Monday issue. Does your position, does anybody have public comment at this time?
Frank.
I, I mean, I, I think it better serve them saying, these are the hours I want you to work. I mean, you're negotiating the hours, and, you know, is that a present you want to set with all your employees? You negotiate which hours?
Or do we just want to set them?
Do you want to set them? I mean, I mean, you're, you're gonna have a past president where, oh, you negotiated the hours this person, you know? Uh, Don, Don, the building inspector's a little different, because he's out, you know, a high percentage of his hours are out in the, in the community. But I, I, I think you, I would, I think you have to be careful of that.
Well, I think also, we are working with Sophia, and this was Sophia's recommendation to, to the situation we're facing, right?
To this particular situation.
Yeah, was, was to ask for a, for a schedule.
But I, I, I have no problem with you saying, you know, can you suggest with a schedule that would work for you? But I think you gotta put something in the letter, however, I want to remind you that, you know, as an employee, we can set your hours.
Yeah, and that's what the, that's what I ended.
And I think you gotta be careful, because, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, you're negotiating hours and it might not be in the best interest of the community or the taxpayer.
Yeah.
You know, like, working all day Sunday, and I don't know if that's a suggestion, but I would say that I would be careful on that, you know, because that's uncommon. How many people, you know? So I, I don't, you know, that's, that's my initial reaction is, it's fine to ask her for a suggestion, say, oh, this will work, you know, let's do this, let's do that.
And that's, and that's all we're doing, and, yeah.
But, but I think that you gotta remind, remember, I think in the end, you have the right to say, these are your hours.
Uh, Ellen Culver?
Hi, I, I don't know if, um, I'd be around to. Sorry, this is not working because my husband's on as well, I'm trying to go further away. Uh, is there an echo now?
No, you're dead here.
All right, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, four or five people, uh, have mentioned privately to me that it was quite annoying to have to come out after dinner to go to the clerk's office. Um, I don't see that problem so much in the summer, because it's light and it, it seems like the day goes longer. But think about setting hours in the evening, once it gets dark at four thirty or five, people work all day, then they come home and they have their dinner, now they have to come out again at seven thirty or, or quarter to eight for the clerk. I think that, just, I just want to go in record to say that I think one evening is plenty, especially with fall and winter coming, that's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we, but we do need to get what we're sending, that we're sending this back to Sophia, right? But.
I, I'm, I'm modifying it with, based on what we said.
Yeah, I mean, I, but I, I, I think part of this, you know, to, to respond to what Frank was saying was, yes, but this is us asking, can you please provide a schedule? And at that point, of course, it's the employer's, you know, discretion, but this is just us asking, can we see something?
What, what is the maximum number of weekend hours with which you would be comfortable? I, I mean, I personally think that three, like, nine to twelve on a Saturday morning is adequate, I don't really see any reason for more. Anyone who can't get there during the regular work week, Monday through Friday, I mean, I don't know what her hours, they're probably not gonna be all Monday to Friday. A three-hour window is adequate, I've never had a job where I couldn't, we find either a three-hour slot in the evening or a three-hour slot on a Saturday that I could go.
I, I think that what we should do is just more or less ask, a- a- and I think, like I said, the big thing is non-consecutive days and, and have all the hours be outside. And if yes, a twenty-four hour, if nineteen point seven five hours on Monday is proposed, we would say, no, that doesn't make sense. But why don't we just ask, and then we can deal on the back end later with, okay, this is, this doesn't work for us, you know?
Okay.
We'll split both of them.
Um, and, you know what I'm saying, like.
Also. We would like your hours to meet the following criteria, one, all of your nineteen point five hour, five hours must be included.
I believe it's nineteen point seven five.
In the schedule. Okay.
Corey Melissa?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see the nod. Two, at least two non-consecutive days must be included. Uh, three, um, what, do you want to put a max on the number of hours per weekend?
No, I want, if we can get a proposed schedule with all nineteen point seven five hours included and two non-consecutive days.
So you're okay if she works till midnight one night?
No, like I said, I think if, if there's a proposal for, for eighteen point five hours on one day and one point seven five two days later, of course, it doesn't work for the town, right? But.
But what if she proposes to work from six to midnight?
Yeah, but I, I think, I think what Justin is saying, give her opportunity to do it.
Okay.
But I think you have to put a, something in there saying, you know, the clerk needs us to help the meet, meet the needs of the community, the town citizens.
Right.
You know, and that's, you know, that's gonna be your driving theme, if you have to come back there and say, no, these are the hours.
Yeah, and, and it's always at the end of the day up to the employer, but we are working with our employees, uh, um, to find a mutually agreeable solution. And yes, it doesn't mean just because something is submitted that followed the letter of the letter, that we have to accept it, right?
Right, and I actually put, we reserve the right to alter your schedules should we feel this not meet the needs of the town, that's another thing.
That's, that's what you need in there.
Right, um, so you're, you're okay with it just being nineteen point seven five hours included and at least two non-consecutive days?
I think that's the ba- bare minimum.
Okay.
And then, you know, other, we can discuss other things as they come up, but I think that's the bare minimum.
Okay, I, I'm just foresee, trying to foresee what problems might arise, and I could, I could in this case see for so many hours that for five to nine, for example.
Yeah, but I think you, you have your disclaimer in that letter. So I think, you know, with Justin says, you're taking our approach, let's talk about this.
Okay, okay. Right, I just feel like if there are other no-fly zones, it's better to put that on the table at the front rather than at the end, but.
The problem is you could think of a hundred and one fly zones, you know, you know, so I think you just have to start, my experience is, start with this, you have the disclaimer in there saying.
Yeah.
Combing the community, that's, that's the whole idea, that's what.
How about and a substantial portion of the hours should be during normal workouts? That's a variable, it's, it's non.
Yeah, I mean.
But that, that's, I mean, that's a good phrase.
Yes.
You know, you, hopefully you won't have to go back there and say, well, that's not, and it's really about meeting the community needs, period.
During, uh, normal business hours, is that one? Normal, normal town hall business hours.
Well, the problem is, I guess, we don't have a set schedule, because the highway department operates on different departments, and then the library and the transportation to town hall.
But Chase Town Hall, Chase Town Hall administrated.
Normal business hours are generally, should it be like eight to five or something on Monday to Friday?
Right, okay, normal business hours, ah, perfect, okay. Uh, so I don't think it, uh, remove this sentence completely. Uh, we would like to keep this process moving forward, we're giving you two weeks from when this email is sent for you to decide upon a set schedule, if I'm not, uh, if I? Yeah, oh, that's true, Sophia not given a revised schedule by said date, your schedule will be set for you, and reserve the right to alter your schedule should we feel this not meet the needs of the town. Uh, I should undo the things that were all caps. All right, that's how it operates.
Can I get rid of the, what are you, the other, I'll handle that for you.
Yep, fix it. I didn't think that was far enough, I was.
I'm just gonna remove the, before more, just in terms of during.
Ah, thank you.
And then the other question I had was, uh, a more regular stationary weekly schedule is a little bit worried.
It is.
What if we just said, like, we would like, we would now like to move forward with s- your setting a more permanent.
Permanent.
Schedule. Because you're. This should be a separate sentence, I think, if I'm not given a revised schedule by said date, your schedule will be fe- be set for you. Okay, we have, we reserve the right to alter your schedule should we feel, does not meet the needs of the town. Just because I think that's, those are somewhat related and somewhat unrelated. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, no, I, I'm fine. I, I'm not picking about edits unless there's a substitution.
Well, I think it is substitution.
Yeah, no, and, and I agree with you.
Any of our employee schedules could be altered.
Right.
To meet the needs of the town regardless of.
But I think it's okay to say it in this particular instance.
All right.
All right, I will send her that.
Yes, and the other, um, question that Sophia had was if she could follow up with Donna?
And I think that she should.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna email her if it's all right with you, and say that she should not, she can't follow Donna, with Donna, she should to, to, um.
Yep.
Limit any potential liability to the town.
I agree.
All right, the next two.
And I will, I will send this to Sophia.
Yeah, you'll send that draft to her and I will email her about contact.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, see you.
See you, Frank.
See you, why don't you?
So.
What are we, two, ca- council?
So council of consecutions, so Gareth reached out last week about, um, the council of contact policy. And frankly, when I received Gareth's communication, I mean, I, I understand it's a hurdle for anyone to have to fill out a form before contacting council. Um, and then Don raised the same concern, Don Torrico. And it, when he stated it, it made a little bit, it read a little bit different to me, which is that as the law enforcement, as Gareth, or Don as the zoning enforcement officer, going through the select board, even if it's not an issue of time or confidentiality, it could alter their impartial enforcement of the law.
Hmm.
Um, and.
That's a really good point.
If not actually in appearance, so I wrote up an email to you right when this meeting began. Um, a possible amendment, which I'm not necessarily, um, recommending, we got today, but I would put on the next agenda.
Right.
And it would simply go at the end of the policy, it's a law enforcement exemption that says the police chief and zoning enforcement officer can bypass the standard process for contacting council if following the standard process would by their own understanding hinder the proper and impartial enforcement of law. In such a case, the police chief or zoning enforcement officer can co- contact town council directly without notifying liaison. The police chief and zoning enforcement officer should follow the standard process for contacting council if following the standard process would by their own understanding not hinder the proper and, and impartial enforcement of law.
Um, the only thing I might suggest is, instead of without notifying the liaison, what if we, what if we were basically, I gotta think how to word this, but they had permission to contact council without asking permission?
Yeah.
But they still had to notify the liaison that that happened? Because part of the reason we want to do, do that is so that we can track the bill.
Yeah.
So we're saying you guys can reach out to council if you need to, just let us know you're doing it, is my, that's the concept.
Yeah.
Do you think that that makes sense?
I, I was figuring that they would probably, um, notify the liaison anyway, and, and or that it would show up in a bill. But, and I just didn't want there to be any. But, and I just didn't want there to be any appearance that the select board is, for instance, if Gareth is an investig- is doing an investigation,
Right, is it appearing?
if the select board is pampering the police chief or pampering the zoning enforcement officer, um. It will always show up in a bill, right?
That's true.
That's the case, I would hope that unless notifying liaison would also, you know, hurt the investigation, then they would do it anyway.
Point taken.
So it's allowing them to do it?
Right.
To, to a- avoid the process, but. If you're, if you feel comfortable in a- a- amending the council policy, then we could do that, I can also throw this on, on the next agenda.
No, I think I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Cause I think it makes sense, especially since they're, you know, legally obligated people. Um, to do that and, you know, asking them to let us know if they needed to do it. Um, so we don't have to first get wind of it when we get the bill, might be great, but I don't think that has to be in the policy.
Yeah. Um, so, and then the only change that I would make is I realize in that policy, we're not referring to coun- county council, it's shortened to just council.
Oh, point taken.
Can contact council directly, that's just changing, taking town out of town.
Okay.
And capitalizing council here.
Because you were just trying to get it down.
And then this would just go at the end, and unfortunately, we are no longer.
Gonna fit on one page, oh no. Pardon? I'll do my best.
I, look, when, when Gareth first reached out, I didn't really understand. And then Don, the way Don worded it, it just made sense, like, okay, yeah, what if, what if the investigations happen to, you know, it's just the law, law enforcement needs to be able to do things impartially. Other than that, I would motion to.
Amend.
amend the council contact policy to include this law enforcement exemption.
All right, second.
Any further discussion? There being none, call votes, Justin?
Yes.
Uh, Justin, yes, Susan, yes, motion carries.
Susan, yes. Sorry.
I'll email you the exact wording, Melissa, the only changes was a, uh.
Ca- a capitalization.
A capitalization and removing, just basically town council.
Town.
Yeah, I did all that.
Removing town from the council and capitalizing council in the last sentence.
Yeah. All right, I think, and, and I'll, I'll tell Gareth and Don too that, that changes were made. I don't know if we need to send it out to everybody again, I mean, the policy did change, but it only affects two people.
We probably just need to tell them that we changed it, but.
Yeah, let them know if they, and we'll keep it always kind of updated.
Um, the next male correspondent is Mickey Jervis. Letter about the ball field. And she writes to the parks commission, but she CC'd us. So Mickey is saying that she does not think the parks commission is responsible for storm damage cleanup. The town should be responsible for storm damage on all public properties. The way I read mass general law, unless the parks commission delegates that responsibility to the tree warden, the parks commission is responsible for everything that happens on parks. But we're figuring that out, I think that's part of the tree discussion.
Um, I, and there's really, it's not on our plate because the park commission is elected.
Yeah.
Um, I.
I guess it's on our plate to the extent that if we can find a way to pay for the trees.
I had the impression even with not paying the trees, they didn't have the money, but.
Even with not paying the trees, I think they can find, I mean, they have almost eighteen thousand dollars in there in general. That's not including lifeguarding, that's not including lawn mowing.
I had the impression from what the commissioners said when they were before us, that much of the monies were already committed, but I make the mistake.
Yeah. Yeah, no, Jerry, I mean, they, they have committed some, but, no, I think if they were cleared of the tree obligation, at that point, it's really them, what their priorities are.
Right.
Um, anyway, what, our only business with that is really the tree stuff. Um, other than, Melissa also mentioned that since we have that, since the highway department has that dump truck, we might be able to potentially work with Jim and Hall loads of.
I'm trying to work with Ira in case the parks commission doesn't approve the work at the ball field to come up with a creative solution with some volunteers and getting the highway to go get the mix.
And it looks.
Ira is hopeful though that.
Pardon?
I said Ira is hopeful that it's not gonna come to that, but.
But it's good to have a backup plan.
That's what I call them.
Backup plans are a good thing. So are we on, are?
Minutes, I believe we're on minutes, and I think we're just gonna tackle seven twenty.
Yep. Seven twenty, yeah, cause I, I haven't yet had that seven twenty to seven forty seven.
Two seven twenty seven.
I have to send them.
That would be wild.
So I am blue and you are purple. No, I am purple and you are blue.
I thought.
No, I think I am purple.
Yeah, it comes up on my thing as Susan being.
Oh.
So I, actually with regards to minutes, so Susan's were kind of, yours weren't really expressing an opinion and I, do you, are you comfortable if I feel that it's not an opinion being expressed that I can send them to you, Justin, so you can see where she made changes and you guys aren't doubling up on things?
Um.
Hers were more, you were more like.
Like editorial, not, not.
Yeah, they were, you know, moving the sentence around and.
Yeah, I mean, look, most of my edits aren't really, you, I mean, depending on the set of minutes.
The, so Susan usually sends them first, so I think it might be easier if I send it to you and then you could be like, oh yeah, I don't have any changes.
Well, I think to be safe, let's not, I just don't think it's worth it, the, if we.
It's, yeah, it's safe for good doing.
Certainly not, maybe next year.
If we want to, um, avoid the time, we can always, um, we can always, you know, like we talked about earlier, put it off during a meeting, which is something that Steve and I did occasionally. The minute, the, these edits are not. Uh, I mean, there's no, this wasn't the longest.
No, it's pretty true.
Uh, I have no questions on your purple edits, if you have no questions.
I'm not sure how this ends up.
I just, I didn't wanna get into the back and forth about the basketball court that goes. I felt like it was a, an aside.
So just delete that whole thing.
And I just had it as, as Jerry, he finds it disgraceful.
Okay.
And, no, Ira feels the field has been neglected and he finds it disgraceful. I just felt like there was misinformation about the basketball.
Yeah, no, I.
And it wasn't really related to what we were talking about, it was kind of just, uh, thrown in there.
Right, well, I, I know why he mentioned it, but I see your point. But it's disgraceful, so it would just be a comma and, uh, he finds it disgraceful and disservice, right?
Yeah.
I also messed that up, that should be field.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, this is an unknown.
Yeah, so that should be, and other items to which they have already committed. That's just so weird, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Already committed.
Yeah, so should we just say, like, go with purple?
Yeah. That's all I got.
Okay, I will motion, wait, one last question.
Which one?
Um. Do, Melissa, do you know if you hung on to that council form that I completed? Council form?
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay, let's just add that to, um, it already says coun- county council contact form, but like the completed council contact form documents.
Okay.
Just to the bottom of the documents.
Oh, okay. To allow you to contact council?
Well, I, it was just a document used in the meeting.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
So I just.
Go ahead.
Otherwise, I will motion to approve the minutes of seven twenty twenty-two as amended.
Second.
Call votes, Justin, yes.
Susan, yes.
Motion carries, I just missed it right there. And that's for Melissa. Uh, one other small matter was just that Donna reached out from Melissa and I and asked if their office should take care of the title work for Curtis Road Bridge. Uh, the state's doing the, um, is that, um, to, what's it called, tents?
The title, the tents, yeah.
Is they're redoing the bridge.
Right.
So that's, I guess, like, the deeded properties around the, where the actual work is taking place.
Okay.
Anyways, I asked, they, Donna asked, are we gonna have someone do it or should they do it? And Melissa said, we don't, we don't have anyone to do it, so it makes just so much sense, so I just said, yeah, you can go ahead with it.
That makes sense.
Um, so they're taking care of that, it may prob- I mean, it will probably show up on the bill, but they had someone to do it and we don't.
Right. If, if we were gonna pay someone?
Yeah. Um. I'm trying to think if I need to say almost.
The only other thing I had is that I, I'm still waiting to hear back, I've reached out again to Verizon because, you know, I according to my notes, I was about to hear back from her mid-July regarding the check on the line from the SLIC on at Fairview, up Fairtown, and I have not heard back, so I did call and went to message, um, I have not heard back, but I just wanna let you know, I, I haven't dropped that ball, I'm still, like, I gave her grace period, but
Yeah.
now we'll start pounding her. Um, that's the only thing going on on that anyway.
Okay.
Um.
I need to, before next meeting, I have a couple of homeworks, like, getting a sense of terror committee. And then we'll also have, that will be past our deadline for submitting appointment. Um, for, for the finance committee, please, it's three area, two forms submitted.
Oh, oh, oh. Right, so we, so far we have Eileen and Don.
Eileen, Marcus and Don, sure.
Um, I did personally after the last meeting, reach out to Eileen, um.
Roger.
Roger and, uh, Rebecca.
Yeah.
Um, Rebecca, I guess, chose not to, well, or maybe she will, but by the deadline.
Yeah.
Um, oddly, and I don't know, I, I'm not sure what to do about this, but I have a worrisome number of bounce backs on emails and a number of people have had to re-mail me because when they emailed me at the Monterey Mass dot gov email, it bounced back to them. Roger was one that bounced back.
Voice, Roger.
A lot of times when I resubmit them, if I wait a day or two and I resubmit it, it does go through. But it happens with regularity, I would say two or three a week.
So I just need to see what the messages that you're getting is for the bounce back.
Sure.
I don't have to get to email out to some of them.
Yeah, and I've had not as much, but there's like one or two people in particular, it loves to, uh.
Not let you email.
What?
Not let you email?
Yeah, but it's weird too, cause I'll email them sometimes the same address and that, sometimes it's a reply.
And sometimes people I have emailed multiple times and it always works, except it doesn't.
It's a reply to a message and, and, uh, so it's not like I'm getting the address from them. I don't know what to do.
Yeah, let me see the, what the uh, reasons you're getting, um, so what is our meeting schedule then?
So then, last thing is just scheduling, so today is August third, Wednesday. We, I think it's, makes sense to take next week off, if you want to meet, let me check my thing. If we wanted to meet on, we're not gonna meet on the tenth.
So that would be the seventh.
What day, what day is here?
Eleven.
Um. Do we wa- want to meet on the ninth?
Uh, on, I, so with who, like, just us? Or you mean the joint one with the SB or do you mean just?
Oh, no, I was just talking, me, what I'm saying is, I'm fine with the cancel for next week.
Okay.
Unless there's anything that you feel is urgent, I don't.
And honestly, if there was something that was urgent, like we needed to sign something for the twenty, the election on the twenty-third, I would be okay with coming in to do that on the tenth, like, I just didn't want, my concern was that the last time we had an FC meeting, joint FC meeting, full vice select board meeting, it was like very long.
Yeah.
I, I could come in and do a, an hour, but I don't wanna do four hours on a, the night before my surgery.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I'm okay with coming in if we needed to do something important, like signs and documents or something for the election, but other than that, I'm okay with skipping and just doing the seventeenth.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, I, I, I don't think we need to meet next week. Then the other question is, we have an election on the twenty-third.
Right.
We had talked about, it's awkward, and so, two things, one is at the following, next following meeting, I will reach out to the clerk and ask if we can swear in the select board member at the beginning of that meeting.
On the thirty-first.
If that's legal and, and it should be. And yes, the other question is, do we want it to be on the thirty-first rather than the twenty-fourth? I think it's nice to, to, to hold off, uh, rather than meeting right after, we have fifty, one other weeks of the year to meet. Um, but.
I would agree, and there, I mean, the pro and con, for this, I think it's fine, we've been operating as a two-person board. Um, I've heard the argument that it's unwise to do that at, on the regular election cycle because that would give us like a week where the person was, we were essentially a two-person board and neither fish nor fowl, the third person's elected, but not, not officially part of the select board, is the downside.
For the swearing in.
On the other hand, pardon, for, for the swearing in, but also for the meeting, like, I guess if they're sworn in, they're sworn in.
Yeah.
The flip side of that is, there's plenty of select boards that only meet a couple of times a month and if the per, if the election occurs between those meetings, there's that period of the same, so I think a reasonable argument could be made that it's perfectly fine to just have the next meeting the following week.
Well, the other thing that is interesting, just on the topic, and I won't hold you too long, but, um, the fact of matter is, select board members only hold power during call meetings, right?
Right, right.
So the fact, if we meet the day after or the week after, no one of the two or three of us has any power until we meet as a board, right?
Pointing, right.
So if we don't meet, it's not like the next person prevented from doing anything, just the same way that we are every week.
Right. So, I'm okay with that, let's do the thirty-first.
So, we'll do the thirty-first, so our next two meetings will be the seventeenth and the thirty-first for us.
Mm-hmm.
And the thirteenth for second homeowners meeting as well.
Right, and then.
If you're up for it, if you're not, just call me.
The, wait, when did we just say for the joint meeting?
And then we're into a joint for the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth, okay.
So despite taking two weeks off, we're meeting four times in the next four weeks anyway, so. All right.
Uh, okay, yes.
Um, comments and questions from the public? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to meet adjourned. Motion to meet adjourned.
He said four thirty for that.